Welcome to the June 22 Oshkosh Council Meeting. Please call the roll.
Miller.
Here.
Wojciechowski.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Mugrow.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Paul Mary.
Here.
Present seven.
Councilmember Miller will lead us in the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. We ask for your guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anyone registered for citizen statements?
You missed introduction of staff.
Ah, I'm so sorry. Wait a minute. Let me get back on track here. We have an introduction of staff. Chief, would you come forward, please?
Honorable Mayor and council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to have these two outstanding gentlemen join me tonight. I'd like to introduce the Oshkosh Fire Department's newest Battalion Chief, Greg Stelter. He began his career with the City of Oshkosh in 1997, has worked his way through the ranks, and was last assigned to our Training Division, and he'll be becoming our Battalion Chief on our B shift. To prepare for this job, he's completed the Managing Company Officer Program at the National Fire Academy in 2020, and he's currently enrolled at the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh in the Fire and Emergency Response Management Program with an anticipated graduation date of 2023. So extremely qualified and capable individual. It has a long history of performing well for the Fire Department and know that he will be well-suited to take this next leadership role. And here is Greg.
Congratulations.
And we've had this vacancy because our senior-most member of the Fire Department, Mark Betcher, who started his career with the City of Oshkosh in 1985, after 36 years of committed and dedicated service to our community and to the department, is retiring. He's worked his way through the ranks, held all the positions, been involved in instrumental in all the different divisions over his career. Last 13 years, he's been a Battalion Chief. He's been assigned to our B shift. In 2019, he was recognized by the State of Wisconsin as the 54th Assembly District's Responder of the Year. And while we will truly miss his leadership, his dedication, his commitment, and his friendship, we wish him all the best in retirement.
Congratulations.
Thanks, guys.
Very nice. And Ms. Roche, did you have a memo staff announcement?
Well, we might as well, since we're talking retirements. Mr. Davis wouldn't even sit next to me this evening, and the city clerk requested it, but I'm not going to let him get away that easy. His last day is July 9th, conveniently four days before the next council meeting. So he thought he was going to sneak away, but I think, come on up, Alan, get your due. And I just wanted to give you the opportunity to thank him as well. I know.
We were going to pull you up.
That would have been a key word's good sweater.
We were going to pull you up at some point this evening, but just on behalf of the council, the city, you know, your tenure here, wow, remarkable. From rejuvenating the South Shore Riverwalk, the use of TIF to be a catalyst in this community, Go EDC, and just improving our relations with the building community, your tenure here has been remarkable. So a retirement well earned. We're going to miss you, but enjoy it. But I think without a doubt, we can say that you're leaving this city a lot better than you found it. So appreciate your service and thank you for everything you've done.
You're welcome. It's been my pleasure and my honor to serve so many good council members and mayors over the years, and I can't forget anybody from my staff over the many years. We work very hard to improve the processes around here, improve the physical environment, and like you said, leave Oshkosh a better place than we found it. So thank you for the kind words.
And Alan, not a lot of people know this, but Alan is actually 85 years old. So he's due his retirement.
Sometimes it feels that way, Mr. Miller.
The rise sense of humor has certainly been appreciated. I mean, obviously, you've been leading as a rock through, you know, the post-2008 recession and, you know, in charge of basically the Renaissance and bringing the phoenix up out of the ashes here. So you rock.
Well, thank you. And before I can forget, got to highlight the city manager because I tell people I wouldn't be here unless Mark Roloff was here. So I can't give him enough kudos for everything he's done. So wanted to highlight that. I think you have a rock star city manager. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alan. Actually, I inherited Alan as a contract planner. And councilmembers Hanson and Wojciechowski will appreciate this. In 1992 is when Alan and I first met. He was a contract planner when I was the administrator in Berlin. And, you know, it's his own fault for following me to Grand Shoot and then following me onto Oshkosh. But we've had a great time, a great deal of professional respect for Alan. Yeah, we're going to miss him, that's for sure. And we'll do the same thing to Mr. Larson in a couple months. So thank you.
All right. Well, I believe we do not have anyone registered for citizen statements. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And public comment on agenda items?
We have no one registered.
All right, we'll move on to consent. We please have a motion and a second on consent.
Move it. Second.
Discussion. There. Let me practice. We're back on the button pushing.
We're back to normal, right?
Yes, yes. Councilmember Mugrow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Van Gomple and a representative from Ellers, if you want to come on up and tell us about the good news. I always enjoy inviting you up here. We're paying you for a few minutes to come here, so we might as well hear from you for a few minutes, right?
And this would be on?
This is on.
21, 331?
331 and 332. Sorry about that. Appreciate it. Floor is yours.
Thank you. So we sold the other two obligations today, same handout as last time, except I populated the additional two rows. So as you may have watched in the markets in particular last week, at the end of last week, we had the Fed meeting and then the comments regarding the fact that inflation is a bit higher than expected and also an anticipation that the Fed funds rate may get moved up in 2022 instead of 2023. So what we've seen is a little bit of turbulence in the market since the end of last week. And as a result, we didn't do as good as we did two weeks ago, but we still have the lowest cost of water and sewer money that the city has borrowed for in the last five years. So with respect to 2021D, we received three bids, when it was KeyBank Capital out of Cleveland, 2021E, which is the sewer obligation purchased by the Baker Group. They were the best of four bids received, and they are out of Oklahoma City. Both the water and the sewer utility are rated AA3 by Moody's, so not completely unsurprisingly, the winning TIC was less than a basis point off each other at 185 for the water and 186 for the sewer. Again, as compared to the estimate, which is only an estimate, we did actually have PNI costs that are a bit higher, whereas the GOs and the stormwater sold two weeks ago were lower. As with the other obligations that were sold, we did receive premium bids. So those dollars that were received, we turn around and we use those to reduce the number of bonds sold. So the resolutions that Lynn distributed prior to the meeting, those have the correct power amounts on in terms of the final award. And happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Given the negative news about interest rates, are we escalating our plans of financing some things? Or have you guys been working on some strategies?
The, I'll defer to Mark or Russ if they want anything, but in terms of the capital, you know, the ongoing capital planning, you know, that's pretty much an annual cycle based on where the money is needed. The one thing we're always looking at, though, that's more interest rate sensitive, is the refinancing opportunities. There's one general obligation issue that is first prepayable on December 1st of this year that we've been watching. We've shared some information with Russ using the results from two weeks ago. We'll need to update that again now to reflect the market movement, but that has fairly considerable savings and is something we could sell as early as October. There's also a water revenue bond that we want to take a look at now based on sales results today. So really, the, you know, the interest rate environment is most relevant when we're looking at the opportunity to save the city money by refinancing prior obligations. I don't know, you've got any further comments on that?
I think Russ, you and Todd and Russ have been tracking this for a while, so.
Yeah, it looks like it'll probably be October before we look at refinancing. So we'll just have to kind of monitor the interest rate and the market conditions probably in October. But again, there's some specificity on that date, that callable date. We can only go out three months before that callable date.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Other council members, items on the consent agenda? Right, I just want to make a comment here. That towards the end of consent, we have four block party applications under special events. Very exciting to see the block parties come back for National Night Out, August 3rd. It's not too late. If your neighborhood wants to hold a block party that night, it's the first Tuesday in August. All right, please call the roll on consent.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrow.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carrie Seven.
All right, moving on to pending ordinances. Ordinance 21-342, approve zone change from multifamily residential 12 District MR 12 to multifamily residential 12 District with a planned development overlay. MR 12 PD at 2570 Minerva Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Should we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Mr. Davis.
Madam Mayor, just to point out one thing that was brought to my attention. We have the wrong address there, so I want to make sure that Mr. Miller and the rest of the council knows it is 2750 Minerva Street. So we'll make that edit to the resolutions and ordinances as required.
All right, thank you.
And I find that unacceptable, and I've given Mr. Davis's notice.
So now you can't retire. Sorry.
Knowing it was going to be that easy, I could have done it a long time ago.
Mr. Davis or Mr. Lyons, would you like to just give us a summary of what the purpose of rezoning that to PD is and some of the highlights?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the reason we're zoning this to plan development is a development that was started back in 2007, 2008 timeframe. First two buildings were constructed on this property. We updated our code in 2017 as the applicant moved forward with the third and final building on that site. Obviously, with the change in code, there were some different elements that we needed to address. We felt plan development was the appropriate way to do that, just for consistency of development of the property. So in discussions with the developer, we felt that was the most appropriate way to move forward. So that gives us a little bit of flexibility to address kind of the uniqueness of how the things have changed from 2007 to 2021.
So we're adding 16 more housing units there?
Correct. The applicant is proposing a new 16-unit building on the end of that block. We had a number of iterations we worked through with the developer and Plan Commission, and I think in the end, the developer really kind of worked through those elements that needed to be addressed and came up with kind of a unique way through a little bit smaller of a building to address the concerns of Plan Commission and still have a successful product.
All right, thank you so much. Other council members? Comments? Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, just real quick, I want to thank city staff, Mark Lyons in particular, did a great job ensuring that that development really had some solutions to maximize recreational space. It was something that really came up at Plant Commission, and they did a great job negotiating with the developer in that regard.
Excellent. Mr. Davis.
If I could add one thing, I'd also like to thank the developer, Chad Wiesenberg and his team, for putting together some ideas that I think really fit with the city's vision and still could accomplish the goals that they had. So thank you to Chad's team.
Thank you. All right. If there are no other comments, please take the roll on 21-342.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrow.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carrie Seven.
Next, we have a closure, 21-343, approve closure of Wisconsin Street from Church Avenue to West Irving Avenue and West Irving Avenue from Jackson Street to Wisconsin Street. Should we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Mr. Robbie, how long is this closure? Do we expect to have that section of Church to Irving, from Church on West Irving, closed to Wisconsin?
We anticipate both Wisconsin and Irving to be closed for a week.
Okay, all right. And what are we doing there?
Doing some pavement repairs. We've got some areas due to utilities, we've got some issues, and it's just going to be a lot safer if we can just close those for the week and get in and get the work done.
All right, thank you so much. Other council members, questions, comments?
Thank you.
Please take the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrow.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carrie Seven.
Madam Mayor, just for an informational item, we actually had to do another street closure for an emergency water repair. I'd mentioned it to you yesterday, but I thought, Mr. Robbie, we convened the Board of Public Works while James was out yesterday, but your staff came up in Ninth Avenue?
Yeah, there was a water main leak on the 600 block on Ninth Avenue, and as a result of that, it's immediately adjacent to a private side-led service. So there was no way to repair the main without having to touch the service. And based on the changes that have taken place in administrative code and with our code is, you know, we cannot do a patch job on a lead service. We have to replace it. So because we're disturbing it as a part of the main break, it is alongside service, meaning the main is on one side of the street and the house it serves is on the opposite side of the street. So in order to facilitate replacing the public portion of that lead service, we're going to have to close Ninth Avenue. It just wasn't a good, safe way to do it otherwise. We anticipate that closure will just be for one day, and then when we go back to patch the concrete, we'll be able to patch the concrete in halves and do that under traffic.
That was yesterday?
I thought it was, but.
It will be tomorrow.
It will be tomorrow.
But we didn't have time to put it on the agenda, but technically, normally, council would be doing it, but because of the emergency, I just made emergency orders. So, but it's same thing, and I thought it'd be good to mention it so the public, we're trying to mention it everywhere we can because Ninth Avenue is a pretty big deal. So it'll be disruptive.
And the 600 block is immediately west of Ohio Street, so it's a section of Ninth Avenue that gets a lot of traffic.
Yeah.
Okay, so detours on Ninth. Just a question regarding that being an emergency. I know when we're doing reconstruction or utility work and that, and the water lines are being disturbed, we typically send out a letter to the residents that they could have some potential increase in lead breaking up in the pipes. Since this was an emergency, do they get the similar kind of instructions on what to do with the flushing the line?
Water distribution staff will make door-to-door contact with anyone who is impacted.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. All right, new ordinances. There will be no action on these items this evening. There are three new ordinances. 21-344, amend ordinances pertaining to enforcement of parking restrictions within parks and boat launches. Let's see here, is someone here from parks or traffic or could speak to?
I helped write the ordinance. I might be able to answer.
Yes, just a quick, I guess, summary on what's changing.
We made some changes to the regular parking ordinances several meetings ago and updated them, brought them in. In doing that, we forgot that there were parking restrictions in the parks chapter as well that needed updating. So this basically brings that chapter and that procedure up to the same standard as
For consistency. Okay, all right, very good. Thank you. Let's see here. Ordinance 21-345, approve official mapping of right-of-way connecting the western end of Mockingbird Way to the eastern end of Windsong Terrace. Plan Commission recommends approval. And 21-346, amend ordinances pertaining to definitions within the animal ordinance, chicken keeping and beekeeping ordinances, and create ordinance pertaining to duck keeping. Do we have staff? Mr. Lyons?
I can take a shot at that.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, so you're turning.
Do I help work on that one?
Yes, yes, please. What are we doing here? We're adding?
The Sustainability Committee reviewed and they, the ordinances, and they recommended adding duck keeping. So we are adding duck keeping to our current ordinances. It's basically on the same standards as the chicken ordinances, but chickens aren't ducks and ducks aren't chickens, so there are a few little differences there. And then as we were going through, we found just some other little things that were clean up. So you have a redline version that highlights those. None of those were substantive, but the real substantive change is adding the ducks to the ordinance. So you will be able to have ducklings.
And these are domestic ducks only, correct?
Correct.
Not, don't go out to Menominee and bring home any little ducklings. All right, very good.
Alan, just a little trivia question. Do you know the difference between a chicken egg and a duck egg?
No, Mr. Miller, please tell me.
About three bucks.
There you go. Very good.
Well, it's kind of exciting to see, you know, lots of young families are, lots of families are now trying to do some of their own supplementation by growing their own. And I did not realize until someone asked about this that there was a desire for duck eggs. So I learned something in this process.
I can add one other thing. One other maybe change to note is staff did evaluate the number of total animals permitted for how Oshkosh kind of compared to other cities, and the ordinance does include a change to go from four to six, which would bring us in line with a lot of other communities.
That's the total combination between chickens and ducks?
Correct.
Not bees?
No, chickens and ducks.
All right, thank you. All right, very good, then. That's all we have for new ordinances this evening. Next, we'll move on to new resolutions. Resolution 21-347, approve general development plan for expansion of a multifamily development at 2750 Minerva Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Can we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Any questions for Mr. Lyons? So this is on the agenda twice, and the second part of this is for the general development plan.
Correct. This is the actual, then, implementation of the plan development that the council just approved through the PD. This is where we work closely with the developer, and as Alan mentioned earlier, you know, a lot of credit to the developer of trying to work through unique solutions to make this development work and fit within at least most parameters of the existing code. He kind of came up with a unique kind of hybrid model between the two elements that he was considering doing. So, and it was great to have that working relationship with the developer to come up with this project, be able to move it forward. The applicant actually just today tried to move forward with filing their SIP. So if council approves the general development plan, we'll then be bringing back forward to you in about, you know, three or four weeks here, hopefully the final finished product so they can start construction later this year.
All right, thank you. Well, that was a quick agenda. We're now to council discussion and direction to city manager. I guess we should. Probably. I'm Speedy Gonzalez tonight, so yes. Please call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrow.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
And Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carrie Seven.
All right, now council discussion, direction to city manager, future agenda items, number 27. Future agenda items listed are basically jumping to future meetings. And the first one being the potential for a council retreat, and we had talked about this as a possibility previously. I think it was too quick on the calendar to have that this next week. However, we do have four new council members who have not participated in our strategic planning. There was some discussion, city manager and I talked about as a possible topic for that half-day retreat for those who have an interest. Because we are typically every two years on the strategic plan update, so that would be kind of a preview, review in advance of next year's strategic planning update. City manager, did you have any other?
No, and I think that, not regarding that, because I think that's just sort of a briefing for everybody, because a lot of times we do the strategic plan at the end of the meeting, and it's not as quick an agenda as it is tonight, but it would give an opportunity to do that and perhaps some, you know, team-building exercise or something like that, like we did a few years ago. I think Deputy Mayor Mugrow and Mayor Paul Mary were on the council at that time. The retreat when Councilmember Miller was on, that was just a retreat for, purely for strategic planning purposes. But we can accommodate, we have another fifth Tuesday coming up in August. We could look at that date or any other date that, whatever works for council.
Do council members have an interest in that?
Yeah.
Looks like yes.
Yeah, I think if we're all on the same page when we go into the strategic planning process, we do a better job with it, so there's a logic there.
All right, very good.
Is the 31st, is there an interest? Because for the next, for the 29th of June, there was some interest, but it was very late. So if you could just take a look at your calendars. I can have Diane send out a reminder and see if that. I know it gets closer to the school year for some of us. That becomes an issue.
And Councilmember Ford, we're just not going to be available on the 29th, so that wouldn't have worked.
Oh, next week, anyway.
Yeah.
That's true. But the next fifth Tuesday, as you see on future workshops, we have two fifth Tuesdays in the summer, which works out very well for budget workshops. We have next Tuesday's budget workshop at 5:00 PM, Capital Improvement Plan, and then August 31. So one of the thoughts was if we did a noon get-together, you could spend the afternoon doing a retreat type of thing, and then take a quick break and then at 5 o'clock, get into the budget workshop. So that's just a suggestion, and we know people are going to be there in the evening, so we'd give it a shot. I can have Diane send out, you know, a doodle poll or something like that to check your availability. Okay.
And that second budget workshop on the 31st also, maybe somebody want to give a little more detail for newer council members on that, early projections and directions on priorities, what you're expecting from them?
Yeah. You'll see in the agenda packet, we do have the budget preparation calendar, and this has changed up a little bit in the last couple of years with Mr. Van Gomple. But next week's workshop is about the Capital Improvement Plan and really how that relates to debt management, because your Capital Improvement Plan and Debt Management Plan are just, you know, they're woven together. So that's really what the discussions will be next week. You will be getting the document with the five-year list of projects and then the one-year detail of the individual capital projects we're proposing next year and their funding sources, and you'll be getting that this weekend. So you'll have plenty to read ahead about what we have planned for the year. The purpose isn't to get into the detail with the projects themselves, but really talk about how it impacts borrowing, and that'll be enough for a two-hour discussion.
Did you have anything you'd like to share about borrowing and some news that maybe a finance director may?
I'll let, you know, I'll let Russ do the.
Don't want to seal his thunder.
Yeah, oh yeah, don't want to seal his thunder. He was the one that delivered the good news, so our equalized value.
Yeah, for the council members that were around last year, we went through this process. We looked at the potential of borrowing into the future, and we looked at the equalized value. One of the key components on, you know, how much debt we're willing to take a look at is, you know, where are we at with our debt limit capacity? The state statutes limit your debt issuance to 5% of your equalized value.[1755.61] So equalized value is a pretty key component when we do our planning for capital projects in that it establishes the limit. Now, long-range finance has looked at our debt policy, and we're trying to stay at fifty percent of our debt capacity as an internal go. And initially, that was going to be a project that was going to take us into later in the twenty-twenty decade, almost to twenty-thirty. But most recently, based on preliminary estimates I have received from the Department of Revenue, our equalized value is going to go up by about eight percent, which is a pretty substantial growth for us. The bad side of that means that our assessed equalized ratio is going to be going down. Last year, that assessed equalized ratio was about eighty-eight percent. But we're looking with an estimate of possibly at eighty percent or just slightly above eighty percent of our assessed equalized ratio. So the good news is our equalized value is going up, which increases our debt limit capacity. But, you know, we'll have to look at what this means on the operating side as far as a potential reevaluation, maybe coming sooner than what we thought during the budget process. But from a capital improvement planning process, that's, that's a good thing. I'll have that preliminary worksheet in with a presentation for you this weekend. And then we'll call that, we can call that spreadsheet up on the screen, because a lot of times council members will say, you know, if we're planning on borrowing fifteen million dollars, this is what's going to happen to that ratio. If we want to borrow eighteen million dollars, this is what's going to happen to the ratio. Likewise, if we only borrow twelve million dollars, you know, what does that mean to the ratio? And, and council members have, in the past, had, asked for different scenarios to look at, and we kind of run them at the same time. So that's what we're working on right now, and I'm just wrapping some of those projections up, and I'll have that presentation ready by the end of the week.
So we're projecting, I think you skipped over it. We're projecting fifty-point-three percent, our ratio. And our goal was to get that by the end of this decade. So we're doing very well. Point of reference, two thousand nine, our ratio is at eighty-four percent. We've done, we've, we've, we've reduced our debt limit by a third, and that's really something to be, to be happy about. So, well, a lot, that was really good news, and Russ gave that to me on Friday afternoon. So it made, it made for a good weekend.
And it's always appreciated when you're able to share those multiple scenarios and, and look at that. That's helpful.
Yeah, I think it just helps in that planning process. You know, as Finance Director, just to give you a little preview, there's a lot of need for capital projects in all our departments. I sat down with the city manager, and, you know, we've kind of trimmed back to what we thought might be a presentable option. But certainly, we are open to dialogue and discussion. But there are some projects that were identified by department heads that they were looking to accomplish in twenty-twenty-two that we think we might have to wait till twenty-twenty-three, even with that good news. So there's a lot of competing interest from streets to parks, to community development, to fire and police. So it's, it's been a tough process, but I think it's one that hopefully you'll appreciate once we present our recommendation to you moving forward.
All right.
Can't wait till next Tuesday, I can tell. I can see it in your faces. But yeah, I, it'll be a good discussion.
And then just a reminder then to council members to plan on our third and fourth budget workshops. They are full day, October eighteenth and nineteenth, for your calendar planning purposes. And those are usually what, eight, eight-thirty to?
Eight to four-thirty.
Four-thirty-ish. And Clearwell Field Visit.
We're still working on a date that will, I, I assume that by the next council meeting, we'll have a date to, to check with you on. It should be no more than an hour, but just a good field visit. Invite some of the interested parties, neighbors, and between Mr. Robbie and his staff. We can give you a nice tour of the, the water treatment plant, a water filtration plant, excuse me, and then just answer questions regarding the, the Clearwell project and how that all fits in. So we'll get, we'll get you a date soon.
All right, very good. Councilmember announcements and statements. Report of council liaison for boards and commissions. Councilmember Hanson.
Sorry, was that an old one? I didn't see it on the screen.
Nope, yep.
Okay, Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to bring to council's attention, so next week, Monday, is DEI's, DEI's meeting. There is one discussion item on there regarding specifically the decriminalization of marijuana. And that's just going to be a discussion of how committee wants to tackle that issue. But one step in that process is hopefully doing a joint workshop with council to develop, you know, resolution ordinance, what be it. So I just want to bring that to everyone's attention, that we will be having a discussion at next week Monday's committee meeting. So if anyone's interested in being a part of that discussion early on, feel free to be at that meeting next week. Thank you.
But if there's going to be more than two, we need a public notice.
Yes. So either let me know or I'm the chair of that committee.
Clerk.
Clerk, yes, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, just a reminder for everyone to, if there is going to be, if there are going to be more than two of you at any function, please let the clerk know so they can get a public notice out. Thank you. Other, Councilmember Erickson.
Just a quick update. We had a transit advisory, advisory board meeting last week Wednesday. So I have some updated numbers on the student ridership. So for the month of May, we had a total number of student riders of eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-two for May of twenty-twenty-one. So total year-to-date is thirty thousand six hundred and thirty-seven. So they're definitely seeing an increase in student ridership. We also got a tour of the, the Go Transit office and the garage space. We have a new member on the advisory board, so that was helpful to be able to all come together. It was our first in-person meeting. And we got to see the new wheelchair securment system, which was awesome to see, and how easy it will be for folks who use wheelchairs to be able to, you know, get into the, the space themselves without assistance from the driver. So, very cool.
Very nice. Other council member updates. All right, I just have three parks advisory board. We did have a discussion and voted on adopting the trail route name of Five Bridges Trail for the Riverwalk. And I believe there's going to be further recommendations on some of the subsections of that trail. So that's really exciting. And then we also reviewed the CIP for parks. And then we also had a discussion about some of the ARPA. And committee members are told on all the boards and commissions, I believe, that we have until like July second-ish for those recommendations. Redevelopment Authority reviewed five proposals in the Sodis district. That's very exciting. And that's to be, to be continued as we narrow down the finalists on that. And then the bike and ped. There was a lot of reference to the Five Bridges Trail. We do have two alternate spots on bike and pedestrian for citizens who are interested in applying. And there's some discussion about placing some sidewalk out by Bank First, just off Oshkosh Ave, and also another discussion on ARPA. That's all I have. And then the Fourth of July Parade. So this is exciting to have the parade back, Fourth of July this year, starts at nine o'clock. And council members who are interested in walking, we usually have traditionally walk behind the fire truck. However, you're certainly welcome if you'd like to ride in the fire truck or, and the organizer of the parade also said we can ride our bicycles or bring your own vehicles, whichever you like. But we would meet over at the fire department, Station Fifteen, so one on Broad and Court, right? Yes. And they recommend we get there about eight-thirty. I have ordered some candy, so typically twenty dollars covers enough for us to throw out throughout the course of the parade, unless you're really ambitious and want to bring lots of extra. So just whenever you can, get that to me. Is everybody interested in participating? It's going to be an exciting year.
It's been a while.
All right. City manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. American Rescue Plan Act. We've been holding some listening sessions to get ideas from residents and nonprofits. I would say for the most part, the presence at the first meeting was mostly nonprofits, although there was a couple citizens or at least a couple people who spoke as citizens. But it was, there were people that generally we all knew. There were members of boards and commissions and nonprofit entities. Made very compelling cases how they were impacted by COVID and what they were perhaps hoping for. Each of these groups will be filling out one of those forms that's asking for some detail on what their requests may be like. That was last Thursday's at ten A.M. Yesterday's at two P.M., as Councilmember Erickson knows, was not as, not as wild as, as the first one. And we had one person online, and that was it. So that was the limit of that one. We are holding our third one tomorrow at six P.M., hoping to get some more feedback there. What I've essentially done is give a little overview of what ARPA rules dictate as far as what allowable uses are, and then just open it up for, for comments and then Q and A. And it, that's worked pretty well. I have gotten some requests from, from community groups to speak to them about that, and I'm certainly open to that. Originally, we talked about July second. That really was an arbitrary date. It was just like, let's pick a date to get people to work towards. We've already extended it to, to July ninth, and it's not like it's a formal grant program. So, you know, I think we're going to be looking at ideas as much as we can. Mr. Van Gopel and I have talked about different approaches to this. The first thing we really want to get a handle on is lost revenue, because lost revenue will translate into what funds will be recovered by the city, and then what, if anything, the council wants to do with those funds. Those represent your most flexible use of ARPA dollars. There are some very restrictive uses, but once the revenue is identified as recoverable and we get it back, the exercise of discretion really falls upon the city to do that. So that's what I envision doing and identifying the maximum amount of lost revenue. And then from there, then we can come back to council and say, here's what we have, here's what we recommend. Even though a lot of projects get proposed, and specifically with respect to internal staff, their capital improvement process is really their de facto ARPA request process, because there are a lot of projects, as, as Mr. Van Gopel mentioned, that didn't make it into the CIP. But they certainly warrant discussion by the council, and I want you to be aware of those. We're going to have some really tough decisions. Mr. Robbie made a very good observation. One of the projects you're going to see in the CIP, and I'm not, you know, teasing you with a little bit of insight, but the reconstruction of Algoma Boulevard is just about one mile. And that reconstruction will cost us ten million dollars. So that means ten million a mile. Now, that's everything, water sewer, the whole, the whole thing. That's just a, a good indicator, because it's ten million one mile. Of all the streets we have in the city, rated four or less on the Pazer system, which means fair to poor condition, we have fifty-three miles. And ten million buys us one mile. Gives you an idea of the scope. We could use all of the ARPA money on two miles of streets, and we'd still have fifty-one miles of streets to do.
But it's my understanding we can't use ARPA money for streets.
Well, like I said, there's a lot of things you can't use ARPA money for. But if we have lost revenue, then council, the discretion returns to the city to do what you choose to do with recovered funds under ARPA. There are, that specifically a street project doesn't include, but all the, all the underground utilities for that project would all qualify. So it's a very minimal amount of money, relatively speaking. Third to a half of the project compared to the whole thing. So just gives you an idea, so just giving you a flavor of what types of things you're going to be looking at. So, you know, the lost revenue is really going to be the key, and that's what you're going to see first and foremost. So we'll see what kind of, we're going to prepare a little summary of the comments and suggestions we get, and we'll share that with council and show them where they are in the different categories.
And I think we talked about, this would not necessarily be the last opportunity for public input. There could be a later opportunity for public to give input. And there are still, under Hot Topics, the American Rescue Plan forms that citizens and nonprofits and others can put in requests and descriptions of what like they'd like to see as well.
The Polco survey is another one. And then, of course, you know, after staff makes presentation with recommendations, then it's all in the public realm. The public can come and talk about it as well. So there'll be multiple opportunities, and I do not expect to make a recommendation on all of the funds. I think we need to keep our powder dry. The impact, there may be a delayed impact on some things, and I think it'd be inappropriate to, to just blow it all in the, in first, right out of the gate, really take a look back and say, what are some of these things going to do? For example, room tax. I don't think we'll recover fully from room tax losses until about twenty-twenty-five. So what is the cumulative impact of all the loss we're going to incur? I don't know the answer for you. Ms. Albright and I are looking at that and trying to come up with that. Mr. Van Gopel and his staff are doing a, an independent review, and we're kind of comparing notes. But that's just one of those that we don't even know what the full impact's going to be. So I think we do need to keep our powder dry for what may happen down the road.
Could we have, on our outstanding issues, maybe a monthly update? Like as of, like tally of where we're coming in at on those room tax dollars in comparison to what we're projecting?
Well, actually, we have, I can just give you, we have a monthly report that we get, and you're welcome to look at it. We're tracking about over twenty-nineteen. We're probably, right now, tracking an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar loss. We had a million-dollar loss last year. So it's still, it's, it isn't recovering. So I'd be happy to provide that report. It doesn't provide any detail. We are prohibited by law from giving any detailed motel, one.
Right.
We just give you very broad numbers, but that, those numbers are there, and they're, they're public record. So I'd be just happy to, just, happy to provide that for you.
Is council interested in the full report or just kind of a executive summary?
It's a one-page.
Oh, okay.
It's a one-page report. It's really a summary.
All right, it already is.
Yeah, I've got just the thing for you.
Okay.
Happy to do that. Outstanding issues are certainly in here. Deputy Mayor Muggerour and I had discussed, me just giving sort of a public report, just so that the public has an idea of some of the things that we've, we've discussed. And I've given you a memo on this. But just a couple of the issues, reducing homelessness. A lot of that's going to depend on what goes on with ARPA. But I know our community development department's been working closely with Day by Day in terms of our community development block grant funds that came through the CARES Act. And I know we got a couple, a couple council members were like, but they haven't gotten their money yet. Unfortunately, the feds are so slow getting the, getting the bureaucratic wheels turning, we haven't even gotten authorization to give a single dollar out of last year's CARES Act money, even though the council approved this, darn near close to a year ago now. And we still don't have the authorization from the feds to release the money. And I know some folks at Day by Day, for one, but just all other agencies are, are getting frustrated. And first, they were concerned that we weren't doing our job. But we're still waiting for the state to give us approval, because the state got their hands in a portion of that CARES Act money, even though it's federal money. So we are, you know, regularly working with Day by Day, and we're still having active conversations with, with COTS. You'll recall that they had proposed a development right at the beginning of the year, and that deal fell through. They're still looking, and we still want to see them have a presence, because they add to the continuum of care. You've got Day by Day, which is the acute nightly, literally Day by Day, and COTS is a more long-term thing. With respect to diversity and inclusion, we had a great session with our department heads and senior management staff with the group FEI, which is our consultant. And they're going to be recommending some future training. FEI is very, very busy. Consultants with diversity, equity, inclusion are in high demand right now. I think we're probably going to be working on the goals or the measures. I think we're probably going to be working on the goals or the measures by ourselves, but I think we feel pretty comfortable doing that. We've been working on performance measures in general, and we are aware of communities that have taken a crack at diversity, equity, and inclusion goals. So we're going to be talking to those people and seeing what we can do. I think, Mr. Fitzpatrick and I have discussed it, Ms. Moran's working on it with us, and I think we feel comfortable we'll be able to present something to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee even without FEI's help. But to get a consultant in right now is, it's like getting a contractor. I mean, it's just, there are certain things that are in high demand right now, and they are absolutely in high demand. But we're working on the goals, and I think, you know, we, I think we talked about, you know, can they get necessarily in the '22 budget? I don't think we can get them in the budget document, but I think we can get them in place for starting data collection in 2022. So that's what I have on there.
So, I'm sorry, can you back up just a minute? So are you saying that those measures that we talked about, because I know Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee is waiting to get some of those targets or goals in order for them to review, so are you saying that they might not get that? Because they're also holding back on their action plan, that we're not going to see this until next year?
No, I didn't say that.
I'm sorry.
Number one, the committee should still be working on their plan.
Yep.
And that should be, the measures are just to fulfill that plan. So we're going to be working and getting them. What I said was, you're not going to see them in the, the budget document for 2022 is due to you the second week of October. They will not be ready by the second week of October in the budget document, but they will be in place, and I think we'll be able to start presenting them to the DEI Committee so they can start vetting them out, giving us feedback, so that by the time 2022, 1-122, I think we'll be ready to go. Regarding facility needs, staff, I think we will be looking at trying to schedule a workshop with the council about the assessment of our facilities, so that you can take a look at this. The request will be weaved into the CIP, but where this comes from, the data that supports it will come from, will come from this report. All the departments have provided data, and you'll be seeing that. And by August 1st, I think we'll need to schedule something to have a workshop with council on that. And then lastly, I wish I had better news with the MSP program, the Municipal Services Payment Program. I think I put a little something in here. It was included in the governor's proposed budget, and I want to thank Representative Gordon Hints for working with the governor's office to include it. That would have represented probably for us about an 11% increase. It looks like Joint Finance Committee at the legislative level has removed this from the budget. It's not final yet, but it's as good as gone. Similarly, no increase in shared revenue, no increase in expenditure restraint, a minor increase in some transportation aids, but most of it will be directed towards the benefit of town, so we may not even get the full 2% there. That's very disappointing. This is a long marathon game we're going to be playing on this topic, and we're just going to have to keep plugging away. And certainly, you know, I appreciate Representative Hints keeping that on the front burner for us with the governor's office, but once the governor turns it over to the legislature, it's a different body, and we, the league, we got it on there, the League of Municipal Vehicles, we got it on their priority agenda, but even that, I mean, the league was, I think the mayor was tuned in for a little bit of the call on Friday. There was a little bit of singing the blues over the lack of wins for cities and villages in the.
Repeated, resounding disappointment.
Yeah, I didn't want to depress them anymore, but yeah, I think you're accurate. And we talked about how we got to recover on that. Not everybody is into the Municipal Services Payment Program like we are. That's very specific to us. We're the third-largest recipient in the state. That's a real challenge. But in general, cities need to get better respect, and this budget didn't reflect it. And on that happy note, that's all I have with outstanding issues. In the agenda packet is our first-quarter report. No big surprises or concerns that are jumping out to us right now. There'll be a little bit of comparative lapses because of COVID last year, but nothing that we are urgently worried about at this time, especially with the first quarter. And then COVID-19 update, I really don't have anything. I just keep that as a place marker on the agenda. So that's all I have, Madam Mayor and Council.
All right, and as far as COVID updates, we, I know we got some requests this past week, or I did, I'm sorry. There are several places that are still available for walk-in vaccination for those who are still on the fence or were waiting for any reason. I believe it's called Walk-In Wednesdays at Sunny View. Is that correct?
Yep.
Yes. And what about the university? Is it still available at the Culver Family Welcome Center? Do you know?
I don't know.
I think that they're.
Winding down?
They're winding that down, especially with us getting closer to the end of June.
Wargreene, CBS, and all those, am I not supposed to name them? Farmers, oh, the farmer's market, is that this Saturday?
Yeah, they've been doing it every Saturday.
Every Saturday?
They have a stand.
That's true, yeah.
Well, very good. Yes, farmer's market then. All right.
So that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
And Deputy Mayor Muggerower has a motion for us to go into closed session.
I move that following the adjournment of this meeting that the council convened in the closed session to discuss the mid-year review of the city manager, an employee over which the council has jurisdiction and exercises responsibility pursuant to Section 19.85, Pairs 1C of the Wisconsin State Statutes.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No, it's a roll call.
It's a roll call.
Miller?
Please call the roll.
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Period seven.
We are adjourned.
I move to adjourn.
Second. All right, any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
It's a roll, I mean, it's a voice.
Now it's a voice. Why do I always mix that up? Back in person, little fuzzy. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we are adjourned.